Good morning, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the Delaware County Commissioners Meeting. It is Tuesday, February 20th, 2018. The time now is 9:07. Everybody could please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, in the midst of with liberty and justice for all.
Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry.
Here.
Ms. Reagan.
Right.
Mr. Kane.
Here.
Mr. Brooke.
Mr. Brooke will be here in a minute. He's just running a little behind.
Okay.
First order of business, we have a public hearing. I have a public hearing admitting the traffic ordinance. Angie?
I advertise two four-way stops, one at the intersection of Old Granville Road and the other at Blacksmill Road, and the second four-way stop at County Road 700 South at 300 East. So I don't know if anyone's here today to speak on that.
Do we have anybody from the audience that would like to talk about that?
Angie, was there one at Old Granville and Blacksmill Road? There's some tree issues there. We're gonna send them a letter also.
I can do that.
Okay.
Not a problem.
The next under the public hearing is a nonprofit, 1810 South Liberty.
Yes. Stand here.
Up here at the podium, please.
Just make sure the blue light's on.
Okay.
Done. It's good. Do I start?
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Good morning. My name is Craig Grabill. I'm the executive director with the local nonprofit ECO Rehab. We are requesting the tax certificate for 1810 South Liberty Street. Our nonprofit was started in 2009. To date, we've rehabbed about six houses, five of which have been returned to the tax rolls, starting from obviously not on the tax rolls vacant blighted homes, been sold to homeowners for homeownership. So for 1810 South Liberty Street, we are requesting the tax certificate so we can rehab the property. We are funded through the Paul Brothers Foundation to rehab this property. We are currently working with students from Ball State University's College of Architecture and Planning who are making designs for a net zero energy house. We plan to rehab the house starting as soon as we receive the clear deed for the property. And when the rehab is finished, it will be transferred to the Muncy Mission to be used for their transitional housing for men. Do you have any questions? I was told to keep that very short.
Is anybody here to speak for or against it?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next public hearing is for nonprofit for 700 West Fusion. Anybody here to speak for or against?
Bill Walters is not here today. Brad Bookout, though, with Delaware County Economic Development. I know that Mr. Walters does have a prospect who's interested in the property. That's a local company, and so appreciate your support today.
Nobody else. I entertain a motion and a second to close the public hearings.
Second.
A motion and second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Next, we'll move on to table business. The only one that I would like to see brought off the table would be the Unball Comprehensive County Financial Plan. This is something that we did a couple of years ago to have Unball go in and look at the finances for the county. I believe the last time we did this, they came in and actually found three or $400,000 that could be used for, I believe, vehicles at the county building.
I'll make a motion. We remove the Unball Comprehensive Financial Plan.
Second.
The other three, I'd like to go ahead and leave the table at this time. Next, we'll ask for approval of minutes of February 5th, 2018.
Do we need a roll call, James?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yes, yes, we do. Sorry. I need a motion and second.
It's all right. Mr. Henry made a motion. Ms. Reagan, second.
Go ahead.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
You guys want to go ahead and just approve it at this time, too?
I think, I don't know whether we could, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion and we approve Unball's comprehensive plan.
Second.
Have a motion and second for approval. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Now we need approval for the February 5th meeting. Seven minutes?
Second.
Have a motion and second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Next, we'll move on to contracts and agreements. The bid open for the Highway Department materials.
Commissioners, I advertise for our annual material bids for stone, fuel, and asphalt materials. I believe Steve has all the packets.
I've got them all here.
Because we also are collecting bids for a paving project on Eat Albany Pike. So I'm not sure if everyone labeled on the outside of those packets.
No, let's take a peek here.
Can we come down there and help you, John?
This one says liquid asphalt. This was Eat Albany.
I see you guys, the email Fridays of all.
Well, let's take a peek here. I apologize for being late, Mr. Sharon.
That's fine, John.
First one I have is AgBest LLC, 2101 North Granville, Muncy. This is for gasoline, diesel fuel, different types of diesel fuel. Gasoline at option 1, 170.9, firm bid 182.9. Diesel, $2.13, 213.9. C number 2 diesel, 201.9, and 209.9. Bio diesel blended fuel, 204.9. Option prices 10 AM and 212, so change. So don't include taxes.
Commissioners, if you'd like, some of these bid items will be several items, like in the stone category, 30 or 40, and depending on the quarries. If you'd like, I can put a tabulation sheet together and scan through all those bid documents for your review.
Yeah, we could listen to the bids and then we could take it under advisement.
Because John could be reading for a while.
Yeah, you can put that together and then we can make our decision after you do the tabulation.
So we just wanna, we just wanna say the company names you got the bids from?
Sure. This is Klink Group out of Ashley, Indiana, for liquid asphalt. Next one is asphalt materials out of Indianapolis. This is for liquid asphalt delivered, liquid asphalt FOB plant. Next one is Marathon Petroleum out of Finley, Ohio. This is for liquid asphalt. This is for asphalt FOB Delville plant. Next one is E&amp;B Paving. Looks like this is for asphalt mixes. Yes, different asphalt mixes. That's a paving project. I've got two of the paving projects. One is E&amp;B and one is Millstone. So I would just open all those at one time and just see if I got all the material suppliers. This is from somebody.
There'd be a grant total on that project, those projects.
Right. Irving Materials. This is for asphalt mixes, stone, gasoline, diesel, all kinds of good stuff.
I thought you were talking paving.
That's all the material supplies, suppliers I have.
But on the paving, I'd like to have the public hear what the paving.
I will. But I wanted to say I've got all the material suppliers. Now I'll open the Eaton.
And John, would it be proper if someone came in from out of town that they could come up and look at those?
Actually, no.
Or Angie?
No.
Okay.
The bids. I'll announce the total.
Well, not take them, but.
No, but I'll announce the total, but they can look at the bids because that's proprietary information.
Okay. Well, I'm just saying since we didn't read them.
Oh, the suppliers?
Yeah.
Okay.
If someone just wanted to.
And I'll scan all that information. Denise will have it for her record.
Well, I just want to be on record that one.
We do that every year.
Yeah, it's the same.
Well, we usually reveal in the past.
Non-material.
Non-material.
But on the paving, John, if you look in the packet, there'll be some that looks like a little spreadsheet that says base bid.
Yes.
And then they'll have a grand total.
Right. This first one is First Brooks Construction Company out of Fort Wayne, Indiana. The total is $784,859. Next one is Milestone from Lafayette. No, actually Portland, Lafayette Street in Portland, Indiana. And its total is $825,400. Their bid is $884,485. 884,485. Those are the three that I have.
What's the length of that group?
It's a little over five miles, five and a half miles. The town limits of Eaton, all the way to Camden, Rhode Island. And this is also one of the projects that we submitted for the 50-50 grant.
Thanks, Mr. Sharon. And they're gonna take some of it up also mill.
Bob can answer the specs better. I didn't handle this one.
What was the question?
Are they taking up some of the old?
Are they gonna mill it?
How much?
Just repairing the bad area.
Okay.
And then overlay.
I'll make a motion. We take all the bids under advisement and let Angie take a look at them.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Steve, can you call the roll?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Next, we have agreements. Commissioners, certificate sales for SRI, Janet.
Good morning, Commissioners. This is Janet Kessler, Tax Self-Everbety in the Auditor's Office. This agreement is an addendum to the master services agreement from SRI, and it explains their responsibilities, ours, and their fee, 15 percent of all amounts collected for properties sold at the Commissioners Certificate Sale.
I've had a chance to look at the agreement, and it's similar to agreements that we've had in the past with SRI for these types of services. I haven't seen any that was unusual or different.
I'll make a motion. We approve the SRI agreement.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Next, we'll move to ordinances for first reading. We have ordinance number 2018-003, an ordinance to amend an ordinance regulating traffic on certain public streets in Delaware County.
This is for the two four-way stops we discussed for the public hearing.
I'll make a motion. We introduce ordinance number 2018-001.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Next, we have resolution number 2018-008. Resolution of the Board of Commissioners to the County of Delaware County making a final determination of the tax sale certificate to be assigned to a nonprofit corporation.
Yes, Commissioners, this resolution is assigning the tax sale certificate to ECO Rehab.
Yeah, I'll rule the press with that group. I'll move that. I'll move that, Dr. 2018-008.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and second for adoption. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Next, we have resolution number 2018-009. Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Delaware County, Indiana, making a final determination of the tax sale certificate to be assigned to a nonprofit corporation.
Yes, Commissioners, this is for 700 West Fusion Road, assigning the tax sale certificate to East Central Indiana Regional Planning District.
And that's the old hotel out there on the north side?
Yes.
Is it the Maple?
Yeah, the Maple.
Maple. It's got some woods and I know the mayor will be real pleased with us getting that cleaned up, and I appreciate it. So I'll move that we adopt 2018-009.
I'll second it.
Motion and second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Next, we'll move to department heads and elected officials. I'd like to start off by saying that the Commissioners, we have discussed and we would like to set a meeting for March 8th to discuss the issue with the CAFO that is going to go up north, up around the Eaton area. We would like to actually try to schedule it for the fairgrounds. That way, it will be a big enough area where we can have everybody in the community, if they wish, where they can come up and they can speak on this. People, that's for or against it. Instead of everybody coming in here and having to come to one meeting to the next meeting, we can just have one big meeting where everybody can come in to discuss it.
What time you wanna have?
I would like to have it start at 5:00. I'd like to have it done in the evening. Hold on for a minute. I like to have it done in the evening because I know I've had several emails where people would like to come up and speak to the Commissioners, but they work and they're not able to. So I'd like to have it during the evening to where everybody in the community can actually come up and speak. Mr. Campbell, can you come to?
Just a quick question, Mr. Kane. Will you see if the surveyor can be at that meeting also?
We're going to ask the department heads that will have anything to do with the zoning issues, our attorney. We're gonna ask for Marta Moody to be there with the Planning Commission. We would like to have everybody there that if somebody has a question, that it can be answered by the proper person that will be handling that area. So we just wanna make sure that everybody gets their questions answered. And like I said, even the people that are wanting to bring this in, they will have an opportunity to get up and speak, and we can ask questions of them also. So. Can you go to the podium, sir? And just state your name and your address, please, for the record.
My name is Fred Kasher. I'm from Shamrock Lakes. And we're two and a half, two miles away from this proposed site, and not one of us has been notified of anything. So I would like to request that the people making, building this site be required to notify the people within a certain radius and, hey, we got this coming down the line. Do you have anything to say about it? Because I mean, people here are just word of mouth.
Smart out there.
No, but Angie just said that there's a certain area that they're required to send a note of.
I don't know the exact footage, but IDEM does require, and that's how some of the adjacent property owners were notified, per the IDEM requirements.
Marta, do you know what the area is that they have to notify?
2,600 feet.
2,600 feet. Okay.
So that's why you didn't receive a notice from IDEM.
2,600 feet?
Half mile, half a mile.
Height comes from the state?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, we are especially concerned because the elevation of this site, building site, is approximately 100 feet above our sewage plant. And it's 100 feet above the town of Wheeling. All the creeks, there's 10 creeks in the area. They are just a spit, a spit throwaway from two major creeks. And the elevation in them creeks is gonna be a problem with the height of their building site. And they could not have picked a higher rural population area than what they did. Shamrock Lakes has 230 people just in our, just within our boundary, not counting Lake Mohe and the town of Wheeling, and all the independent people that live close by to this place and have half a million dollar homes. And, you know, I think we should, they should be required to establish a bond, a $20 million bond, for non-compliance to what they are planning on doing. I think that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Brooke, we're able by law to hold a meeting.
Yes, I'll prepare the notices for the special meeting at Hartland Hall. See that Hartland Hall is reserved, and then get the invitation out to the department heads and also to the applicant.
Could we consider 6:00 for people that do get off at 5:00?
That's up to the Commissioners.
Yeah, I'm sure if we start at 5:00, we're still gonna be there at 6:00.
Well, I know, but I'm just saying.
Probably a little after 2:00.
I'm just saying, people have to get.
And it doesn't matter to me. I mean, we can have it at 5:00 or 6:00. I just want the people to have the opportunity to come in.
I understand. I know. I appreciate that.
What time you wanna do it, Sherri?
I think 6:00 at least. I mean, I know people like to be home.
We can change it to 6:00.
I prefer.
Yeah, we can change it to 6:00.
So we need to make a motion, hold a meeting, correct?
Yes.
I'll make that motion. We can hold a meeting March 8th at 6:00 PM at the Delaware County Fairgrounds in reference to the potential building of the compliant feeding operation.
I'll second that.
Will that be in the paper?
Yeah.
Yes. And, hey, Keith, can you get a little article for us in there to make sure you got the Times on where it'd be held? Appreciate it.
Put it on Facebook and Twitter and all.
And can you get into Blackford Paper, too? He doesn't work for the Blackford Paper. Can you make sure that, see if they can put it on our website also?
I'll send a copy of those to Blackford, to the Hartford City Paper.
Okay, thank you.
If they run it, you know, it's up to them, but I'll send a copy of those to.
This paper called The Voice.
Thank you.
The Voice, yeah.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion in a second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Do we have any other department head or elected officials that would like to speak?
I have a couple matters, Commissioners, and I apologize for being late. One of them is I'd like for you to take off the table the opioid litigation agreement. I've spoken with three different law firms. Been approached for the county's participation. I think the law firm, Callum Law, would be the best choice for the Commissioners and for the county, and I would suggest that you sign that agreement.
Need a motion and second to take that off the table?
I'll make a motion. We take the opioid litigation agreement off the table.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Steve, can you call the roll?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
I'll make a motion when you approve the agreement for the opioid epidemic litigation with Cohen and Malagut.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
The other thing I have is the county's been approached about a strip of land in Eaton, Indiana. Evidently, the county received this land many, many years ago in some kind of tax sale. We've been approached by one of the adjacent owners. I think the best course of action under statute is to put it together, to offer it to both adjacent owners, get a bidding process, and then have them submit bids to the county. That would follow the statute. So we can, with the Commissioners' permission, we will start that process and have that available for the meeting on the 5th.
I just have one comment. I'm not opposed to offering it to adjacent, but this five-feet strip was originally part of this gentleman's law, and it was a mistake that was made in the 50s.
Yeah, but I think we still have to follow.
I think we still have to follow the statute.
I don't know those rules. I just wanted to throw that out there. It was part of that original law.
Yeah, we just wanna make sure we follow the law and make sure it's done right, so. Can I get a motion and second?
I'll make a motion. We proceed with that process.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
The other thing I have is update for the Commissioners on Medicaid for inmates agreement. I'm working with Open Door on having them to help do the processing. I just haven't had time. I wasted 10 bucks, got a flu shot, and got the flu anyway, so. So I will continue to work on that, and then we hopefully will have an agreement here pretty soon.
Good, good. Okay, we'll move on to payment of claims in the amount of $883,201.28.
Second.
Have a motion and second for payment of claims. Steve, can you call the roll?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Kane.
Yes.
Next, we'll have questions or anybody have any comments from the public?
Good morning.
Good morning, Margaret.
Thank you, Sherri, for inviting us here. I'm Amy Fant. I'm with Muncy Action Plan, and on behalf of Building Better Neighborhoods, Chief Leadership Academy, also Muncy Action Plan, we invite you all to our third annual Muncy Neighborhoods Idea Conference, which will be held March 3rd. IDEA brings together leaders representing Muncy's neighborhoods to develop and strengthen community-building skills. IDEA presenters will provide leadership training, share best practice strategies for grant writing, project funding, and discuss ways to connect with local government and enhance the safety of our neighborhoods. Attendance is free and lunch is provided. There will also be a door prize at the end of the day. And in particular interest to you all, there will be a plan to deal with the county's abandonment program. problem. The Muncie Land Bank will be discussed, so we encourage your attendance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Amy, I'd like for you to explain a little bit that, Amy, it's a Muncie Action Plan, which we appreciate Muncie because it is the heart of our community. We have to have it hard. But we have 33 additions around the community, and Mrs. Moyers is working with them, and based on that, on trying to help them build the leadership to help their own additions. And this is where I believe Country Village attended one of these leadership on the...
Correct.
A couple years ago. And their little, or big addition actually, is very unique in that they found some solutions to some of their problems, and they solved it with Mrs. Moyers and Engineer's Office. So that's why we want anyone to attend out of the county.
That's right. Yes, we're, we think it would be very beneficial to the county to gain access to the resources that we've been cultivating. So, you know, there are lots of neighborhood associations popping up, and, you know, there are certainly ways that we can help develop them.
Well, we appreciate you bringing that today, and this is going to, you might want to introduce her.
Yes, so Heather Williams, the Lovely and Talented, has been working with Muncie Action Plan and Ball State for, what, five years now? To really build a robust neighborhood association machine. So we really, again, that's why we're here. We think these resources would be very valuable to the county, and we encourage county officials to join us.
Well, thank you very much for cutting.
Have anybody else?
Harry Evans, 2250 West County Road, 1270 North. I thank the commissioners for playing a meeting for it, setting it up, giving the community opportunity to do that. We are on a time-sensitive thing through IDM, and I will ask, being that they asked for a moratorium today, to make sure we put that on hold until we get to have that meeting on the 8th, so nobody shows up tomorrow and asks for a permit for anything. And I appreciate if you could do that today. And if you might be able to, you can ask your attorney and see if that's possible.
Well, that's who we'll ask.
And we appreciate the opportunity for the 8th to have the meeting, not that you'll be surprised with the turnout.
John?
Marta?
What?
I don't think we can legally get a moratorium today with this, with this short notice, correct?
I don't know. I don't know the answer to that. The, I don't know that there is...
It could be an ordinance that would have to be adopted, too, as your moratorium. You just can't do a resolution.
I don't know. I might argue that maybe it could be a resolution, but I would, I would think the next meeting isn't until...
This is the 5th.
Yeah.
I would say that's a little close.
No, I'm, I think that there has to be some notice.
Some written up, yeah, because the terms of it need to be laid out. And you can't just say moratorium without those terms going along with it to make it valid.
Right. I mean, I'm happy to put together a resolution and/or an ordinance, either one for the commissioners. And if you want to have a special meeting to discuss that, that's fine. But I can put it together if you want to, but I just, I'm just not prepared today to do that.
Can you look into that?
Sure.
And maybe if we have to have a special meeting, we could schedule it, come in and do our vote before then?
Okay, I will do that. Okay. Later today or first thing in the morning.
Can we ask the building commissioner not to issue any permits until we look into this further?
You can certainly do that.
Yeah?
I would, I would make a motion that we hold the building permits until we take a look at.
Ms. Ferdinand.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes. Thanks, Marta.
Will you relay that to Mr. Man?
Yes, I certainly will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, I'm assuming that would be permits connected with the lights and not just all...
Right.
Thank you.
Your permits for that.
Yeah.
We want to build, yeah, homes, four bedrooms especially, we're short.
We also have a gentleman here from Community Corrections, John, that he's got a couple questions, possibly could save the county a little bit of money also. Okay.
Derek Bailey, Supervisor of Home Detention, Community Corrections. Currently with our contract on the jail release program is set for 150 clients on the GPS monitoring program on a pre-trial basis. I'm looking to take 15 of those people on a trial, 90-day trial of Smart Link, which would take the price down from $14, down to $10 per client. We would still continue to offer the JRP program with GPS monitoring. This is just kind of a least restrictive monitoring, does a step down to bring, to see if we can't get some of these people that are on GPS or JRP for such a long period of time, an incentive to do better and knock down the monitoring on it. It changes it from, in the contract, from $14 to $10. I'm just asking for a 90-day amendment to charge $10 for 15 clients versus the 14.
These pre-trial days?
That's correct.
And you want to, when do you want to implement the program?
I'd like to start as soon as possible. I've got everything ready to go. I've spoken with a few judges and prosecutors, and they're willing as well to try this program out for 90 days.
I think that probably would be appropriate to make the amendment for a 90-day period.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we amend that for a 90-day period so we can try this new process out.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
You can mention about the same things.
Yeah, I can. There is, I know we have more rain coming this weekend. Been working with John Catino and Emergency Management, Jason Rogers. There are sandbags available at EMS Station 3, and also sandbags available at the fairgrounds. You must fill your own.
Yeah. What, Hamilton Township, they're not going to have any yet?
Is that what you got out right now, John?
Yes.
Okay. I'm guessing if flooding, a large amount of flooding occurs, we'll maybe put those out in some different areas as well.
I believe the city has sandbags and sand at Station 2, Fire Station Number 2. They called Director Rogers this morning and asked for some, so there may be some there as well.
What's the address for Station 2?
That's a very good question.
Well, what streets is on?
It's on 12th Street, 12th and Hackley.
Washington Avenue.
Right.
Thank you.
Right there at the park.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. Am I sure if you guys have anything else?
No. I'll make a motion when you adjourn.
All right.
Recede, recede.
I'll second.
Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Go to recess.